Good evening, residents of Everett, Washington. I'd like to call to order the Everett Council meeting of June 4, 2025. For information on council meetings and how to participate, please visit everettwa.gov/citycouncil. We have a big crowd today. Thank you for all participating and looking forward to what the crowd has to say. For the record, Councilmember Fossey is excused because of a family death, so blessings for her. And so Clerk, please take the roll.
Mayor Franklin.
Excused.
Vice President Zarlingo.
Here.
Councilmember Bader.
Here.
Councilmember Ryan.
Here.
Councilmember Vogely.
Here.
Councilmember Tui.
Here.
President Schwab.
Here. And so at this time, I'd like to ask Councilmember Bader to lead us in the Pledge of Allegiance. Thank you. And at this time, I'd like to ask Councilmember Tui to read the land acknowledgement.
Certainly. The City Council wishes to acknowledge the original inhabitants of this place, the Stohucchi people and their successors, the Talalip tribes. Since time immemorial, they have hunted, fished, gathered on, and taken care of these lands and waters. We respect their sovereignty, their right to self-determination, and honor their sacred spiritual connection with the land and water. We will strive to be honest about our past mistakes and bring about a future that includes their people, stories, and voices to form a more just and equitable society.
Thank you. Now to on to old business. Do I hear a motion to approve the minutes for May 28, 2025?
So moved.
Do I have second?
Yeah, second.
Okay, we have a motion and second to approve the minutes. Clerk, please take the roll.
Vice President Zarlingo.
Yes.
Councilmember Bader.
Yes.
Councilmember Ryan.
Yes.
Councilmember Vogely.
Yes.
Councilmember Tui.
Abstain.
President Schwab.
Yes. Okay, now on to public comments, which includes written comment acknowledgement. Under our rules, written comments shall be considered in the same manner as oral comments. The person submitting comments must provide their name and city of residence to be made part of the official council record. Good evening, Angie. Starting with, I guess, written comments, do we have any?
We have received no written comments.
Okay, how about public comments then?
We do have two individuals online and a few here in chambers.
Thank you.
So we'll start with those online. And David, if you could please unmute, and if you have video, you can turn that on, and then state your full name and city of residence, and you have three minutes to speak. And you can go ahead when you're ready.
Yes, this is Dave Koenig. I'm here if you have any questions. I understand you're going to take up a topic tonight on the Madrona Avenue, and I'm here if you have any questions on that. Thank you.
Thank you. Next, if Lindsay could please, when you see you're able to turn on your camera, you could do that, and unmute and state your full name and city of residence, and you have three minutes to speak.
Hello, City Council members. I'm Lindsay Gagnon, Executive Director for Interfaith Family Shelter in Everett. I'm actually a resident Monroe, so I'm coming here to speak on our agency, which operates four emergency shelter sites for families with children in Everett and provide 22 units in Everett. And I'm here just to voice my support for the comp plan rezoning strategy and increasing housing development in Everett. The city really needs more shelter beds and affordable housing to meet the projected needs in our future. Our agency, our 24 units in total, make up roughly 40% of the total supply of emergency shelter units for families, just in general. So, excuse me. Our waiting list has roughly also 60 families in need at any given time, with new families calling almost every day. So I hope you'll just consider this reality as you make your decision. Thank you so much for your time tonight.
Thank you. And so we'll move to those in chambers, and we'll start with Scott. If he could please come to the podium, followed by Anthony. And please press the button on the base of the mic till it turns green, and then state your full name, city of residence, and you have three minutes to speak.
Hi, I'm Scott Uteritz from Snohomish, Washington, and I'm here to support the new Everett Outdoor Event Center, which would host USL Men's, Women's, and the Aqua Sox. I'm the Technical Director for Snohomish United Soccer out in Snohomish, and I kind of wanted to just tell you guys a little bit about our club and the community and what I think bringing a USL franchise would do. We've recently added a USL League Two, which is the pre-professional league, and we've seen tremendous support from the community already. This is our first year. We've been doing it for about three months or so. Our first game was last weekend, and we've had three events that were basically sold out. Then this last weekend was our first home game. We did a march to the match, which drew a little over 100 kids and parents. And then we had over 500 people at the game. So just in that short amount of time, without even a marketing department or anything, we've seen a huge impact with it. And our kids, we have a club of 2,000 people, and we want to do what USL is looking to do, which is bring kids from the lowest level all the way, have a pathway right here in our own community. And we have 2,000 kids. We have the largest top soccer program, which is the Special Needs Kids. We have over 100 of those kids in that program. We have about 1,000 kids in our rec program. We have over 650 kids in our premier program. And then we just started this USL Two, which is pre-professional, which brings back kids who played in local clubs around the state, specifically in Snohomish County. We have seven kids from UW. We have five kids from Seattle U, some from SPU. And then we have other kids who have played here locally, but then gone to Santa Clara, Stanford. They're all back playing. This would continue that path of development. So these kids could then stay here, play for the pro team in Everett. There's, my director will talk with some stats, but I believe it's 43% of kids that play in the USL League One were played in the USL League Two. So we want to have that a spot here where, within our own community, these kids can start and finish. And I just think it's better for our kids, like we've seen, we've had the players out already. They'll do autographs. They'll have events like that. And I just think it's going to be great for the community. And no better time than now with all the excitement for the World Cup of 2026. So anything we can do to help or get the word out, let us know. And thank you for your time. When my director's done speaking, we'll leave so we don't interrupt everything too. Thank you, guys.
Thank you. Next, Anthony, if you could please come to the podium, followed by Cheryl. And please state your full name and city of residence. You have three minutes to speak.
My name is Anthony Sarden. I am a resident of Snohomish, Washington. I am the Director of Coaching at Snohomish United. As a stakeholder, both with youth soccer and with pre-professional soccer, it's great to be here. Thank you for welcoming us. I'm here to give some talking points and some general information regarding the USL and why Everett is a great choice for it. So we have an unprecedented moment in American soccer recently with the Club World Cup happening in 2025 this summer, with the World Cup coming, as well as the 2028 Los Angeles Summer Olympics. This will only further the fandom for soccer in the United States. The United Soccer League is the largest and fastest growing professional and pre-professional soccer organization in the United States. The USL has nearly 50 professional teams, all the way from Miami, Florida to Spokane, Washington. We see much, the USL sees much potential for continued growth to bring soccer to more markets and is the first and only soccer organization to offer a comprehensive youth to professional pathway for both the men and women, for both men and women in the same ecosystem. The USL has professional and pre-professional leagues on both the men's and women's side. It oversees USL Academy, which is a U-20 program, as well as a youth program. These are development platforms that Scott was talking about for players to advance and to move up from being a youth player to being a college player who is searching to become a professional player and to go all the way to the professional. It's committed to expanding the access to game and ensuring that more fans, no matter where they live, have a club to support and stadium to call home. They're opening up in areas like Spokane, Boise, Idaho, Montana, Albuquerque, New Mexico, and their hopes are to come to Everett. The USL is expanding the game for more and more fans. They see the potential growth to bring soccer markets like this, and especially mid-site cities where professional sports might not be readily available. There's nothing like having a mid-sized city and having a sport team like the Everett Aqua Sox that show a lot of pride in the community. They're taking bold steps to elevate the game and shape the future of soccer in our country. The USL has recently announced the launch, or the plans to launch, a Division One Men's League and implement promotion and relegation. This is the first time in American soccer history they were going to have promotion and relegation. For any of you that have watched the FX series Welcome to Wrexham, that's what it's about. So it's about, Wrexham is a club in Wales that has moved from the lower tiers and working their way up, all the way to where they're playing against the higher tiers. Everett would have that opportunity to eventually go and compete against the country's best. And the USL has been granted by US Soccer the ability now to compete, to be a competing league with the MLS. And so that's a major deal when you have the ability to move up from the lower level of the USL One, all the way up to their new Division One program. So, and that is set to launch in either 2027 or 2028. Why Everett?
If you could finish up.
Okay, yeah.
Thank you.
So Everett is a strong soccer culture. 64% of the designated market area. The saddle area community is highly educated, diverse, and deeply engaged. So, and there's been some recent expansion success stories. So Rhode Island FC is just recently built a 10,500-seat stadium. They're bringing pro soccer to Boise, Idaho, and I'll just finish on that.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Next, Cheryl, if you could please come to the podium, followed by Dan. And please state your full name and city of residence, and you have three minutes to speak.
Good evening. My name is Cheryl Groan. I live in Lake Stevens, Washington. And I'm here on behalf of the Everett Corral. I am the President of the Everett Corral, and we have several board members also in attendance this evening. The Everett Corral is in its 61st season in this community. It started out for the Everett Community College. We are a non-auditioned community corral. We are nonprofit, and we love to sing. We are the oldest community corral in the county. We average roughly 100 members each year, and we've performed at the Everett Performing Arts Center since it opened in 1992. We typically attract 400 community members to our audiences for our holiday concerts and several hundred for our winter and spring. We invite you to our June 15 concert. Additionally, we sponsored two special population sold-out concerts before COVID. One was a children's concert and a special concert to benefit unhoused individuals. At our sold-out shows in '23 and '24, we performed with the Everett, I'm sorry, the Evergreen Community Orchestra, another local group. In addition to our adult choir, we have a youth chorus as well. During most of the Everett Performing Arts Center history, we have felt welcomed and valued as community performers, performing services in the Everett and surrounding areas. We've been the envy of a lot of other corrals because of the beautiful facilities that we have at the Everett Performing Arts Center. Previously, as you all know, we received some funding from the Everett Cultural Arts Funds, which have allowed us to keep our registration and ticket costs low. With the loss of these funds, we're struggling to meet our budget, while also continuing to meet our mission. And until 2019, we received an in-kind grant for venue rental of the Everett Performing Arts Center. Clearly, rising costs and diminished financial support threaten our survival as a nonprofit organization. As one example of what's happening to us, for our sold-out December 2024 concert, our costs at E-PAC increased 32% with no prior warning. We were told that we needed an extra day to set up the theater because of the number of our performers. If we had been told that in advance, we would have changed the time of our rehearsal, and we would not have had to suffer that additional fund crisis. Clearly, this lack of communication and increase in pricing does not bode well for a nonprofit organization trying to keep costs low while providing community services. As we mentioned, we're one of the few choruses located in Snohomish County. We serve singers from 18 to 85, and we really want to continue performing at E-PAC because it's convenient for our audiences. It's great facilities. We also feel strongly that we represent Everett, and therefore we wish to perform in our home city. Many of our members and our audience members are senior citizens, so we want to make sure we have accessible facilities for them as well. We totally recognize that fair wages for staff is vital, and we always support that. But we feel since the change in management to Village Theater, we've had slow to almost nonexistent responses to requests for things like concert dates, rehearsal times, and costs. We just feel like we are second-class citizens now, and the Village Theater is looking for other groups that are larger, that have bigger returns for them.
Ma'am, if you could finish up.
I am, I'm going to. Thank you. We bring these concerns to you in the hope that you will share the importance of arts in Everett community and support our commitment to serving our community, and that you might offer some assistance to permit our continued use of the wonderful performing. Thank you.
Thank you. Next, Dan, if you could please come to the podium, followed by Sam. Please state your full name and city of residence. You have three minutes to speak.
Good evening, City Council members. My name is Dan Anderson from Everett, Washington. Great city of Everett, Washington. I'm here, I'm not very good at this, so I apologize in advance. I want to just talk about the opportunity, possible of rezoning the parks on Seaver Ducey Road near the Phil Johnson baseball field there, the vacant, the lands that are, those lots that are empty at this time. The neighborhood would, I just want to back up quite a few years when CMEX was operating down there. When the news was that they were leaving, they were willing to give it to Everett, the city of Everett, for parks. That was really excitement, I mean, to the neighborhood. I mean, it was, wow. What could we, I mean, the opportunity there is so great. Well, we got the Phil Johnson baseball field there, which has been a blessing. Neighbors go there. We go there and watch the high school baseball. People walk their dogs down there, and we see the community and the neighborhood coming together. So it's exciting, and I see excitement for parks coming in there, for rezoning for the parks. And I just, the vision is unbelievable, what we can see and do there. I talked to the neighbors. They are excited about that, bringing their kids down there. Amazon and a lot of the UPS and FedEx. I drive down there, and they use the Phil Johnson parking lot for lunches. And I think it would be a great, exciting opportunity to have a parks where people, where businesses, people could come in and enjoy the parks and have lunches and whatever, they're, you know, relax. I think there's such a great opportunity, and I think the city of Everett would benefit from that. The neighborhood would benefit for that, and it would really bring that area up looking really beautiful. Thank you very much.
Thank you. Sam, if you could please come to the podium, followed by Rich, when the crowd leaves. And please state your full name and city of residence. You have three minutes to speak.
All right, thank you. My name is Samara Cogan, and I live in the View Ridge Madison neighborhood of Everett, Washington. I just wanted to voice my support for the comprehensive plan rezoning strategy and increasing housing development in Everett. The city needs more shelter beds, affordable housing, and middle housing to meet the projected needs in the future. And I just wanted to make a personal note that I've been a homeowner in Everett since 2021, and I want others to have the same opportunity that I was fortunate enough to have to purchase a home in Everett and become part of this community. So thank you all very much.
Thank you. Rich, if you could please come to the podium, followed by Madeline. Please state your full name and city of residence. You have three minutes to speak.
Good evening, Councilmembers. My name is Rich Ryan. Two weeks ago, the closure of the Early Learning Center at the Everett Community College was brought up to this chamber. Seemed like we had a little bit, a couple of you knew a little bit about the situation. So tonight, I'm asking what steps have been taken to stop the closure. We know the official line, budget concerns, but the truth is, this community's been paying for this since 2022. They made this decision without visiting the program, without engaging the families, and without real public process. If this council's aware of that and chooses to take zero action, then you're complacent in the outcome. We cannot pretend that this is someone else's problem. The city depends on programs like the Early Learning Center to help working families, to give kids a head start, and to keep the community stable. The mayor, just three weeks ago, mentioned that over 1,400 youth are experiencing homelessness within Snohomish County. If that number truly concerns you guys, then this is where we take action. This is, because the Early Learning Center is exactly the kind of support that keeps families stable and prevents children from slipping through the cracks. Its closure isn't a budget adjustment. It's a decision that will put kids at risk, plain and simple. If we're serious about addressing youth homelessness, if we're serious about helping working families, then we should be fighting to protect programs like this, not watching them disappear without a fight. If you think for one second that this is the last tough decision that we're going to face, you're mistaken. We've already seen cuts hit our social services, our education, and our housing departments. As this new administration rolls into Washington, DC, we can expect deeper and broader slashes to federal and state funding. I'll ask this clearly. Is the council truly ready for what's coming? Are you prepared to step up, not just acknowledge these looming cuts, but to act boldly and decisively to protect the most vulnerable people in this city? Everett doesn't need more silence or statements of concern. We need leadership. We need action. And if you guys have any questions about this issue, please email me. Thanks so much.
Thank you. Madeline, if you could please come to the podium. Please state your full name and city of residence. You have three minutes to speak.
Hi, my name is Madeline Shepherd. I live in northwest Everett. We are still waiting to hear back from the city on the steps necessary for historic overlay. I know that you are deliberately stalling while pushing ahead with the rezoning. You think you can placate us in the meantime with niceties. The May 30th interactive swipe map still shows our block being rezoned. Stop ignoring us. I'd like to respond to Councilmember Vogely's comments last week in regards to the proposed rezoning. Councilmember Vogely, you live on 93rd Street Southwest, correct? On .28 acres? That's twice the size of my lot. Why don't you put your money where your mouth is? Use that privilege of yours and fight for high density in your backyard. You yourself said that living next to a four-story building wouldn't affect you. Now that would be equitable. No. Instead, you sat there in self-righteous indignation, thinking you were putting a privileged white NIMBY in her place. Go ahead, lecture me about stolen land. You have no idea who I am. You want to talk about marginalized people? My grandma was a Sudeten German refugee. She was forcibly thrown out of her home as a teenager just because she was German. My family lived there for hundreds of years. Now nothing remains. Everything was destroyed by ethnic cleansing. She was one of the lucky ones. She wasn't tortured to death. My great-grandpa was the only person from a very large family to survive the Armenian genocide. He only escaped being massacred because he happened to be in Istanbul at the time. He changed his surname from Budakyan to Budok to disguise being Armenian. My family still uses this altered name today. Needless to say, that homeland is gone. So are you saying I should feel guilty for having been born here? Would you prefer it if I went back to my ancestral homelands? I'm not sure if I made myself clear on that. How much ethnic cleansing do you need in order to qualify as being marginalized? I am acutely aware of how Native Americans were treated because part of my family was treated much the same way. You boast that you are a fighter for the people, that you stand in solidarity with immigrants and refugees. My husband is an immigrant, so why aren't you fighting for us?
Council President, can I, I'm concerned that this borders on the line of personal attack, and I thought we had, that we didn't allow those here as part of public comment. So just raising that.
Thank you. I agree. So if you could change your tone, it'd be nice.
Yeah, well, I'm nearly done.
Okay. This is not supposed to be a direct criticism of the council members. It's more about criticizing our policy.
But this relates directly towards policy affecting me. I would like to continue, if that's okay. Judging somebody by the color of their skin is racism. Martin Luther King Jr. believed that, and I believe that, but I don't know if you do. You seem to believe we deserve to be punished based on.
Ma'am, I'm just going to unmute you. I think that's just a little more than we want to have here in this realm. So your emails or discussions outside the circle are welcome, but that's just a, I'm just going to be a little over the tolerant level of your opinion here when it comes directly to a person. So appreciate your opinion. Thank you.
Council President Schwab, I would also invite Madeline to connect with our planning staff to, I think we've started to share some information about the process to do the historic overlay that she's referenced a couple of times, and I'm happy to share more information about that as well.
Yeah, thank you.
We have one individual who would like to wait till we get to agenda item 18.
Okay. All right, so let's move on to council comments. Vice President Zarlingo.
Well, with your patience, my sole comment this evening has to do with things related to the comprehensive plan and the neighborhood commercials. So with your permission, I'll wait to offer those comments and explanation then.
Okay, thank you. Councilmember Bader.
Thanks. No report, no comments. Thanks.
Councilman Ryan.
Thank you. Just a quick reminder too, that public comment is intended to be addressed to full council, not individual council members. Let's see. To address the other speakers this evening, thank you to Lindsay Gagnon for bringing that important statistic to our attention about the families on the waitlist at Interfaith Family Shelter. Thank you to Scott for joining regarding the work that we're doing to incorporate the United Soccer League into a potential stadium, and I would like to share who wouldn't select Everett for that. And then thank you, Samara, for your comments, and also Cheryl for bringing that to our attention. I believe she's already exited chambers. I'd be happy to promote that on my social media and also as the Chair of their Lodging Tax Advisory Committee. I'd be happy to connect with Tyler to see if there's any opportunity for a connection with our TPA, our tourism promotion area, to help with marketing expenses for their group. Thank you, Rich, for the reminder about how important early learning is in the community and access to equitable and affordable childcare in the community. I'd share a reminder that the ELC is a mechanism of Everett Community College, which is overseen by the Everett Community College Board of Trustees, and we don't have any jurisdiction in that space, unfortunately. We can do what we can to advocate for more early learning slots through the county and at the state level, but as far as direct oversight or input or any sort of decision-making mechanisms, that's nothing that we have in our power at this time, wherever. And then thank you, Madeline, for sharing too about the need for the historic overlay. I know that's an important part of the comp plan and being able to make sure that we can honor that space as well. This last week, I attended the Snow Track, a Snow Track meeting, I believe it was last Thursday, and there was a really great presentation from Cory about our Vision Zero plans here in the city. There's also a fantastic presentation from Sound Transit, and they worked, the representative, I believe her name was Jaclyn. In her presentation, she was sharing about the work that they're doing, HERC team specifically, to address non-motorized access to the seven different stations in the Everett Link Extension. Right now, they have a map available where you can, an interactive map, where you can go to each of the seven station locations and see the listing of proposed projects to improve non-motorized access to those stations. And there's an opportunity to learn about the potential improvements to certain intersections and corridors and a chance to comment on them. And they're going to be compiling all of that information. And they're gonna be compiling all of that information to put together for their final plan and for their final plan for improvements. And any chance we can get for Sound Transit to do corridor improvements in Everett, I am all for it. I was especially excited to see a lot of different intersection and traffic stop improvements over by the downtown station as well, which I think will go a long ways for pedestrian safety. So, please check out the site. The feedback is open until June 29th, so that, from now until about the end of the month. So, please take the time to look into it and share your inputs. Very important. And last, I just wanted to share Happy Pride Month to everybody. Earlier today, I attended the Snohomish County Flag Raising Event at the Pavilion, Flag Plaza. There's events across the county all month long. Everett has our Everett Pride Group, which is having their events the weekend of June 18th, or June 20th, 21st, and 22nd downtown here. And also Snohomish County, SnoCo Pride in the Park has an event on June 28th at Thornton, Thornton Sullivan Park. So I hope you can join. Thank you.
Thank you. Councilmember Vogli.
Thank you. I, let's see here. Thank you, everybody, to coming and speaking, and all the soccer people are gone, but we got your message. I Dan with the CEMEX site. So I went on a, on the parks tour for the Parks Board, since I'm the liaison, I got to go along with them. And they actually spoke a little bit about the, I think it's 18 acres that the city owns over there. You're still here. And I know that it is in the city's brains and thoughts and ideas and ideals for the future. And you know, with all of the budget and everything, I just want you to know that it's, it was being talked about this week. So, thank you for bringing it up for us. And while our last speaker did get cut off, I do appreciate personally that you came here and said what you had to say. I would happily hear more about that outside of here. So, thank you, colleagues, for reminding us how it's supposed to work up here, but I do appreciate that. And yeah, you never really know, A, if the, if, if we are hearing you, or if you are hearing us. So sometimes, we get to find out that we are being heard. And you did your homework. Let's see. I got some, an ask, and what, and the ask was, why doesn't Everett have a poet laureate? And I'm kinda looking at Jennifer because the mayor's not here, and it's right, it's like, I didn't send an email, and who knows what the answer is, but Spokane does. And I hadn't ever realized anything about it. So I'm wondering if the first person, well, A, I've said it out loud in front of everybody. B, would it be Tyler and the Communications Department? And C, maybe we can just get that conversation started offline, but poet laureate Everett. And rest in peace Jonathan Joss. He was the voice for John Redcorn, and you can look into that. And Loganberry Lane down in my neighborhood was officially opened, the trails from the dog park, Dog Park on 18th to Cash Park. That was super exciting, and I went to the wrong opening, and so I rode my bike, like I was allowed, through the well made trails. A reminder to everybody that the fenced dog area is off-leash. The unfenced trails are dogs on leash, and that's gonna be a really hard thing to remember because folks down there have just been off-leashing it for quite some time, but friendly reminder. And Alliance for Housing Affordability, we just had our special meeting before this meeting, and the updated amended ILA was voted on and approved, and that's all I have to say. Oh, Happy Pride. Thank you.
Thank you. Councilmember Tui.
Yeah, we had the Community Health and Safety Committee meeting this evening before council meeting, and we went over the SOTA ordinance renewal, which will be coming to City Council, I believe, June 18th for a briefing. And we also had an update on the automated traffic safety cameras, which there's also, in, at the end of June, there'll be an annual report that will be given to council. And the one thing I thought, we had a couple of interesting statistics that I'll just share, that Horizon Elementary School Speed Zone, which was the first camera that we installed in 2023, there were 25 crashes, and in 2024, with the cameras, they were down to nine. So, we were really happy with that. And just an interesting statistic, in the month of June, or April, on Rucker and 41st going northbound, in one month of April, they issued 1,166 citations. So, that's an intersection that needs to be monitored, I think. And just that we do have Sorta Culture Festival downtown this weekend. It starts, opens on Friday and runs through the 8th with lots of things happening, so be sure you stop by. That's it.
Thank you. So my report, I just was gonna add to the Community Health and Safety Committee. One of the things that upcoming with the report will be by zip code, those that are being issued a citation. So, one of the determining factors is kind of the, what area that the residents are from. So, just to make sure that there's a fair and equitable, you know, process there. I've been spending, you know, most of the last couple of months dealing with the, not dealing, but working with our, with the city Planning Commission or Planning Department and the mayor's staff, and I really appreciate all the work that the mayor's staff has been doing. There are a couple of things I want to just, just remind those who might be watching, and some that have answered. If there is a specific area that our community would like to be added to the historical zone or designation, I would highly recommend that we start working on that process. It, it doesn't necessarily have to be part of this. Although I think it's brought up, got a lot of people's attention and brought to the forefront, which is a good thing. But it, it doesn't necessarily have to be part of the comprehensive plan. And it can be started anytime, so I'd highly recommend residents that if interested in that, that you get started on that, and I know the mayor's office and the Planning Department will, will guide you through that. Also, there are, there has been some specific areas that have kind of been in focus. And I think Councilmember Zarlingo will talk about the commercial and residential area and some other areas I'll let the planning group talk about. There are two that I wanted to bring up, and one, both of them were somewhat addressed. One was, I know it was mentioned, that was 18 acres, the area on Super Ducey Boulevard and Glenwood. It's actually over 75 acres. And it, it's pretty significant. I know that for, currently it's zone light industrial. And I would think it would be very symbolic for the city to rezone that at this time for a park outside. What is it? P. Parks, and what's the outside? Open space, thank you. Open space designation, it changes every 10 years, right? So, I think it'd be very symbolic. It would probably, one of the largest designations of open space that a city our size, or here on the I-5 corridor, would, would zone. So I, I would suggest that we consider that. I, I can't think of any other purpose that we would use. I know, other than parks, I know that we have an approved Women and Children's Shelter that by agreement, that it would be designated to be in use for two years. And the, and this designating in a park and open space would not, it would not interfere with the, the two-year Women and Children's Shelter, so that would interfere with that project. So, I would suggest as council, consider that. Also, the other, other one that came before you, and the council has a mapping here, and we'll put this on, on well, this will be for the public record. There's an area that's already zoned Neighborhood Residential off of McCall Teal Boulevard. Basically, they call it the Madrona Avenue Neighborhood. And to change the designation to Neighborhood Residential Constraint. And so, those are the, the two things that I, I suggested the council address, and perhaps the Planning Department will, during their, might, might address it and/or this council at any time. So, those are, that's my report. So, thank you. All right, so moving on to administration.
I just have, well, I guess just one item. Staff just noticed that the last item that you had on your agenda last week, which Economic Development Director Ernesti briefed, the minimum wage rules, was slated for action tonight, but it is not on your agenda for tonight. So, we were aiming to get it done tonight, but I just noticed it sort of as the meeting was beginning. So.
Is it ready?
Yeah, it was, it was in your packet last week, and it's slated for action. It's the resolution that was in the packet last week that, that you heard about, so.
So, is it something we can do tonight under new business, or?
You, you can do it because it's a regularly scheduled meeting, so you can take action on, on that tonight.
Okay. Do we have the, the, the resolution numbers for those, for that?
Yeah, it's Resolution Number 8055. No, that was a preceding action. I think the resolution actually gets attached after, anyways, it's not in the packet from last week, but it's the resolution to adopt rules to enact new minimum wage as required by the Citizen-led City of Everett Initiative Measure 2401. That's the item. You could put it at the end of the agenda, or however you guys want to.
Well, I guess, just for my sake, and since it's not on the agenda, I'll just offer the opportunity here, what a council like to address this. Councilmember Ryan.
Thank you. Just a question, if, if it messes up any sort of, if we were to put it on the agenda for next week to ensure public transparency, is there any concerns about timing? Because I know there's the July 1st.
Me, we are close to the deadline. That's why we that's why we had the briefing last week and slated it for tonight. I, I don't know. Dan is there. Maybe I'll make him answer that for me.
Dan Ernesti, Economic Development Director. The resolution, the rules are supposed to be adopted within 180 days, which I believe is tomorrow. The, there's no gotcha, I guess, as far as penalty if we don't do it, that's articulated in the ordinance. However, to meet the 180 days, we would adopt tonight, if possible. It is, if we adopted, if you adopted next week, it would be enacted in time for the July 1st. So, tonight or next week, we both work.
Councilmember Bader.
Thank you, Council President. So, none of this is actually discretionary, right? I mean, we have to adopt this or we'd be in violation of our legal duties, correct?
Correct.
So, given that, we have no discretion here, and I think it would give some time for necessary additional notice to the community, then I'd be all right with proceeding tonight, since we have no discretion.
Okay, any other discussion or motion or counsel? Okay, so I guess we're gonna wait till, unless there's a motion now.
What was the?
I'll do it now because we got so much on the agenda, so let's just address it since we got it before us.
What was the resolution number again? 8055?
No, it's just a resolution to adopt rules to enact the new minimum wage as required by the initiative.
It never happens after we vote.
Yeah.
All moves a resolution to enact the minimum wage in accordance with the initiatives approved by the voters on November 6th, 2025, whatever, 2025, 2024. Thank you.
Councilman Ryan, second.
Okay, motion and seconds. Have made any more discussion? David, could you make a comment on this and what we went through to develop this process and how we're complying with the law? Since we don't have in front of us, it'd be good to hear again.
The initiative required us to adopt rules, and this resolution sets, sets forth the rules. It's based on the City of Renton's resolution, so it's something that's been done before. The rules are, are very basic and non-controversial, and they were briefed, I believe, last week, although I was not the city attorney at that meeting.
I just want to confirm that the date it was passed was November and not the August.
Right, it was November 24th, and the rules are just the last page of that agenda item from last week's packet. It's one page, and like David said, it followed the model of Redmond, and then Dan could speak to this more, but we did get some outreach or responses to outreach this last week, mostly about implementation procedures and not, like, folks were fine with the rules, but wanted us to make sure that we calculated the CPI correctly, that we posted things in the right way, kind of learned from some steps that other cities have done in like the last 18 months or so, who've done the same thing.
Any other comments or questions from council? Okay. All right, motion and seconds have been made. Clerk, please take the roll.
Vice President Zarlingo.
Yes.
Councilmember Bader.
Yes.
Councilmember Ryan.
Yes.
Councilmember Vogli.
Yes.
Councilmember Tui.
Yes.
President Schwab.
Yes. Okay.
And that was all I had. Thanks.
Okay. Our city attorney, David Hall, again.
Again. No report and no executive session. Thanks.
Thank you. Do we plan on having more executive sessions over the multipurpose facility, like in the next couple of meetings?
It is possible. Next week, you have a number of votes related to the briefing that you heard last week. I don't think we're certain of that. It might stem, result more if there are specific questions that council brings up tonight or in intervening days before June 11th.
Thank you very much. Okay, let's move on to our consent items. We have consent items, one through nine.
Move to approve the consent items.
Councilmember Ryan, seconds.
Okay, motion and seconds, been moved to pass items, consent items, one through nine. Clerk, please take the roll.
Vice President Zarlingo.
Yes.
Councilmember Bader.
Yes.
Councilmember Ryan.
Yes.
Councilmember Vogli.
Yes.
Councilmember Tui.
Yes.
President Schwab.
Yes. Okay, moving on to our proposed action items. We have items 10 through 15, and they have all been read into the record. The, the, the third and final reading will be 6/11/25. Do I have any questions or comments on proposed action items 10 through 15? Oh, Councilmember Ryan.
Thank you.
Yeah.
Just, it's more of a comment, kind of a request. I was talking, speaking with some constituents this last week, and we were discussing the proposed Everett Outdoor Event Center. And they were sharing that with the new design and showing where home plate was gonna be and the ingress egress from the proposed stadium. They were hoping for a bit more clarity on the planning that's being considered for traffic going to and from the freeway. So, I think if that could be, not necessarily part of like a third reading or anything along those lines, but I just wanted to share that input from the community. You know, we hear a lot about parking and then how people are gonna get to and from the stadium. So, with the situation of the stadium being closer to finalized, where home plate's gonna be and whatnot, I think the community would appreciate hearing how people are gonna get to and from the freeway and what that means for Broadway, what that means for Pacific, and just those different routes. Thank you.
Thank you. Any, any general questions or comments from, on our proposed action items? Okay, we'll move forward to our briefing item, number 16, our legislative session debrief.
I haven't checked. Oh, there he is. Good. State lobbyists that we work with, Trevor Justin is up on the screen there. He, I'll let him, I was gonna say what he told me really today, but I will just let you say that. Trevor, and I think I will just have Trevor kick it off, and then I will jump in with, to augment, so. Go right ahead.
Thank you, Jennifer. Can you guys hear me okay?
Yes.
Great. Yeah, but just wanted to note up top, apologies for not being there in person and intended to be there in person, but was feeling a little bit under the weather yesterday and today, so appreciate you all accommodating me virtually. And with that, just want to give a high-level overview of the 2025 session. I, I did a more comprehensive I I did a more comprehensive report that I think Jennifer sent to council maybe a couple of weeks ago, so just wanna kinda hit the hi- high notes of that and some of our successes from the twenty twenty five session. Um, and then of course, wanna answer any questions you all may have. And Jennifer, of course, feel free to to interrupt me if I if I leave anything out, so. Uh, kinda high level overview, the twenty twenty five session was scheduled for a long hundred and five day session, began Monday, January thirteenth and concluded on time, um, Sunday, April twenty seventh. I think that on time part is key because there's a lot of discussion if the legislature was gonna get done in there, scheduled one oh five days. Um, there was a lot that they did. There was a ton of, a ton of work which I'll kinda highlight, um, but they did get done under their constitutional hundred and five day limit. So that was good to see. Um, just as a reminder, Democrats continued to control the agenda in Olympia. Uh, pretty strong majorities in both the House and the Senate, um, fifty nine Democrats in the House, thirty nine Republicans. Um, and in the Senate, thirty Democrats to nineteen Republicans. So about sixty percent majorities in both chambers. Um, and obviously, we have a new governor for the first time in twelve years. Governor Ferguson uh, was sworn in on January fifteenth, so he just completed his his first legislative session as well, so. Um, as far as the as a legislative makeup landscape, there's thirty two new legislators in new seats. Um, that includes legislators that were elected to new seats and also those that were appointed to fill new positions. Um, of the thirty two, there were ten new senators. Of those ten new senators, eight transitioned from the House to the Senate. And there were two brand new senators um, entering the legislature for the first time. And then there were twenty two new representatives, uh, two of those twenty two were actually former legislators um, that returned to Olympia. Um, for the twenty twenty five session, there was about two thousand three hundred and eighty seven pieces of legislation introduced. Um, a little over four hundred, four hundred and thirty actually passed the legislature. Um, so it's about eighteen percent. That's pretty, that's pretty common. So it's about twelve to fifteen percent. Um, in a little bit higher clip with with one party rule in Olympia, so about eighteen percent of proposals passed. Um, the legislature had a big task at hand. Um, you all probably have seen the news over the last six or so months. Um, one of the big items um, was the operating budget deficit that the legislature had to deal with. Um, about twelve to sixteen billion dollar deficit, depending how you calculate it. Um, so that was a very significant challenge that the legislature had to face. Um, also, this was a long year, so the legislature passed their biennial budgets, their operating budget, their capital budget and their transportation budget. Um, again, couple of the highlights, um, given the twelve to sixteen billion dollar shortfall, there was significant revenue that ended up being raised by the legislature this year. Um, to the tune of about nine point four billion dollars in new revenue over the four-year outlook. Um, there was a very, a various number of pieces of legislation passed on revenue. I'll just kinda hit the highlights and again, feel free to ask questions if you have more detail, can always follow up too. Um, there was business and occupation tax increases, sales and excise tax increases, capital gains and estate tax increases. Um, some tax preference changes, some zero emission vehicle program surplus taxes. Um, and then unfortunately, uh, Everett was a strong supporter of the property tax cap increase. That one did not make it across the finish line legislatively this year, so we'll have to continue to advocate for that going forward. Um, again, this is what the legislature passed, given the twelve to sixteen billion dollar deficit. Um, the governor was using the sixteen billion dollar number, so I think that's a safe number to use. Um, of that sixteen billion, again, they they raised nine point four billion in new revenue in the operating budget. Now, the transportation budget also had some challenges. Um, in the end, uh, the legislature also passed a kind of a mini transportation package, um, which would bring in about three point two billion dollars into the transportation budget. This is separate than the nine point four. Um, we'll bring an additional three point two billion over the next six years in the transportation budget. And quite frankly, this is to kinda just keep things moving along. This is to keep some of those mega projects that were passed in the twenty twenty two move ahead Washington package, um, to kinda avoid some of those delays. As you all are aware, as projects get delayed, they just get more and more expensive. So um, the legislature passed a, it was actually a bipartisan revenue package in the transportation budget to continue a lot of those projects. Um, and we did get a a small win out of the transportation budget, which I will cover in a second. Um, again, high level overview, operating budgets, um, the final operating budget that passed the legislature appropriates seventy seven point nine billion. Uh, this adds six billion more in spending compared to the twenty twenty four supplemental budget that passed in March of twenty twenty four. Um, that appropriated seventy one point nine billion. So right at about that six billion dollar number in new spending. Um, the new budget also cut three point one billion dollars from what was included in that old supplemental budget. So again, very difficult decisions by the legislature, um, a very tough budget year for for any funding, especially in the operating budget and transportation budget. Um, but yeah, so that three point one billion in cuts will lead to seven billion in savings over the four-year outlook. Um, so that's kinda how you get to that new seventy seven point nine billion. Um, about three billion in cuts, about nine billion in say in in additional revenue. Um, for the capital budget, the final capital budget appropriates seven point six billion in new appropriations. Four point five billion is financed through general obligation bonds for the twenty five twenty seven biennium. This is very common in the capital budget. This is how they do that budget, a lot of bonding authority. Um, and the legislature saves approximately three hundred and fifty million in bonding capacity for next year's supplemental capital budget, which will be the twenty twenty six supplemental capital budget. Um, and then in the in the transportation budget, fifteen point five billion dollars for the biennium will be spent in the transportation budget. Uh, a combination of that three point two billion in new revenue, um, and some bonding capacity of about three point two as well, so. Uh, transportation budget will spend about fifteen point five billion dollars. Uh, some of the highlights for Everett specifically, some of our top priorities was great to see in the final capital budget that passed the legislature, six point seven million dollars secured for the Everett Joint Firefighter Training Facility, which was great news. Councilmember Ryan, uh, see that, a nice acknowledgement there. Um, that was one of our most significant wins of the legislative session. Um, this was a, it was actually somewhat of a heavy lift at the end of the day. This actually ranked number one at the Department of Commerce's list. However, it was not included in the governor's proposed capital budget to the legislature in December, so we had to do a lot of work to to put this project on the radar legislators. Um, our third, our thirtieth legislative delegation was was a huge champion. Councilmember Ryan testified in support of this funding item. Uh, Chief DeMarco testified numerous times in front of this funding item, so a a lot of work there, you know, numerous letters, et cetera. So again, was great to see that six point seven million secured in the capital budget. Um, we also were able to continue operating budget funding for the street medicine program in Everett, which was great news to see. This was funding that was originally secured in twenty twenty three. Um, a lot of times in a, in a tough budget year, the last funding that comes in is usually the first funding that goes back out. Um, but thankfully, you know, we had strong champions working for this funding and we will continue that funding uh, for our street medicine program. I believe it's about two point six million dollars for about four or five different local jurisdictions. So those jurisdictions share that pot of money, um, which Everett is specifically mentioned. Also, there's been a lot of discussion about the Everett new uh, stadium. Uh, also secured, the seven point four million was re-appropriated. Again, this funding was secured in the twenty three capital budget. We got this re-appropriated for the twenty five twenty seven biennial budget, so have about another two years to spend that. And I think, I think you all will will find quick use of how to spend that money. Um, and then in the transportation budget, as I mentioned earlier, um, in that fifteen point five billion dollar transportation budget, uh, ten million was specifically secured for the US two threshold, trestle interim improvements in the city of Everett. Um, five million in this biennium, the twenty five twenty seven biennium, and then another five million in the twenty seven twenty nine biennium, so. Um, again, was great to see that secured in the transportation budget as well. Um, and I just wanna give a shout out to to all of council. You all were great supporters this legislative session. I think all of you either testified in support of bills, signed on to letters of support or, you know, numerous different advocacy ways, reaching out to our legislators, reaching out to other Snohomish County legislators and others. So, um, again, just wanted to say thanks to all you for your support. Um, and I'll pause there, see if Jennifer has anything to add, and then I can highlight some quick policy bills that we were supportive of that passed as well. But Jennifer, anything to add there?
Um, I would just add on the fire training facility dollars, that six point seven million from the state will is a great help as we are preparing in the next three weeks to apply for the rest of it, another fifteen million approximately from the federal government. Uh, so having the match is will help our application this year. And then I'm glad, um, Trevor mentioned the um, the trestle interim improvement. So that's improvements along I five, like both approaches heading towards the trestle. Uh, and kind of uniquely were that those dollars were assigned to uh, the city to expedite those, thanks to, I think, the um, uh, belief of the legislature in our ability to deliver the project more quickly and deliver some uh, relief to uh, in in that area of I five and to the trestle, so. That was it. If you, you can, what else have you got, Trevor?
Yeah, I can just add a couple of policy bills that we supported that passed the legislature this year, kind of around the housing space, the public safety space. Um, I'll just name a couple here. There was a a lot splitting bill that will increase density of housing. That bill passed, which we were very supportive of. Uh, there was condominium construction liability easements that was supportive of that passed the legislature. Transit oriented development. This was a a big piece of legislation that had been worked on for the last, I think, three or four years. Uh, credit to you all. You all are doing a lot of this that was in the bill, um, but we were supportive of that. A little bit more vocally, this last legislative session was great to see that bill pass the legislature as well. Um, there was some local real estate excise tax flexibility that we were supportive of. Uh, there was a crisis co-responder bill that would enhance crisis response services through co-responder integration and support. So that was good to see. Um, of course, House Bill twenty fifteen, which is the main public safety bill of the legislative session. Um, improving public safety and given options for more flexibility, some local, some local flexibility for more public safety funds. Um, some some GMA housing element stuff, a childcare center signing bill that we were supportive of, shared streets. Um, there was a couple bills around the FIFA fan zone and trying to make that experience more more robust. So, um, again, a bunch of, bunch of bills that you all testified in support of. We also were opposed to some bills that didn't make it, which was also good. So just wanted to kinda highlight a few. Um, happy to answer any questions and can can share more offline if y'all are interested, but again, a lot of that's in that report that Jennifer sent you all previously. So again, thanks to all of you. Thanks to our thirtieth legislative delegation, uh, Senator Robinson, Representative Fossey, Representative Cortez. Um, they are our champions. They're the ones that really deliver for the city, so uh, just wanna thank them and and thank you all and and the numerous city staff, Jennifer, Dan, Mayor Franklin, others. Um, you all are a big part of this and again, really appreciate this support and background and it made for a a twenty twenty five successful session, which was a very difficult year. Um, probably the, one of the most difficult years in the last fifteen or twenty sessions. So again, thanks to you all for your support.
Thank you. Um, any questions from council? Councilmember Bader.
Uh, thanks for the r- report. Uh, two questions. First one, uh, if you can be candid and tell us word on the street about the condominium bill, do you, do you, do they, do they think it'll really um, energize condominium construction? Because I think a couple of years ago, we had some hopes around what proved to be, I think, a milquetoast condominium reform. So I don't know if you'd be candid and share your thoughts about whether this is gonna really energize condo construction or not?
Councilmember Bader, that's a great question. There's been legislation on this topic, I think, for the last ten or so years, right? Um, the bill that passed simplified some of the construction statutes. Um, I think it helps. I don't know if it's gonna open the floodgates for condo construction, right, to your point. Um, but I think the legislature's kinda tried to chip away at what can be helpful to condo construction. I think this is a, maybe a smaller piece. Um, probably not a huge piece like the transit or development bill was more kinda pro-density. Um, but again, it's a, it's a nod to to simplify some of those statutes. So I think it'll be somewhat helpful, I guess, would be would be my official answer.
Understood. Um, second question, and this might be more involved. Um, can you share with us in a little more detail what either passed that we strongly opposed or didn't pass that we strongly supported?
I think for didn't pass that we strongly supported was the property tax cap increase. Um, that was one of the pieces of legislation that we've been very supportive of for a nu- number of years. Um, there was a lot of different pieces of revenue on the table. I think in the end, there just wasn't the support from the legislature to give locals the flexibility for that uh, property tax cap increase. Um, so I think that was one of the most significant ones. Locals are struggling, just like the state had the fifteen or sixteen billion dollar shortfall. A lot of locals around the state are are struggling with shortfalls in their own budgets and so AWC, Association of Counties and others, were really pushing hard for the, for the property tax cap increase. Again, that did not make it to the finish line, so advocacy will continue on that. Um, as far as bills that we were opposed to that passed, I would have to go back and look. I don't think there's anything that's gonna have our hair on fire, so to speak, but again, um, if you look at that chart that I sent in our, in the bottom of the bill report, it kinda goes through what our positions were and and where those are at, so. Um, I can, I can look at some more specifics and follow up, Councilmember Bader, if you'd be interested.
Councilman Ryan.
Great, thank you, Trevor. Uh, I guess just, I wanna, one comment and then three comments. Um, uh, thank you for bringing up condominium reform. Um, I do think that'd be great. I think, I feel like this legislature this year, there was a big focus on tenant protection, so that might have taken up a bit of space as in regards to housing affordability. So, um, I would like to see uh, for us to continue advocating for bigger reforms for condominium development uh, for this next year's um, legislative priorities, which leads me to my next question about uh, moving forward. Uh, Jennifer, if you could give a brief timeline on like uh, like what the rest of the year looks like for legislative priority development for next session, if we even wanna think about next session already. Um, or just how council can be involved with that?
Uh, I would say, I I will, the federal affairs part of my job is occupying my brain a lot. Um, I will think about uh, state priorities as we move kind of into late summer and like so August, September-ish, cause we'll do outreach to um, our legislative delegation before they head back, you know, in January and try to get in front of them in the, in the fall timeframe, so. Uh, so yeah, so your, your inputs are always really useful. So kind of that end of summer timeframe is when I'll be able to craft that into what we're working with.
Did you ask, is there another element of what you asked?
Well, I can, I can add to Councilman Ryan. AWC, I think, has already had their first twenty twenty six legislative priorities planning meeting. I think it was last month, kinda mid to late May. Um, so I I will plan to kinda be involved in that process and report back on what the association is thinking and we can kinda use some of those ideas and items to kinda form our agenda. Um, so we'll, we'll be involved in the AWC calls and meetings throughout the summer as well.
I will also, their, AWC has a legislative issue survey for twenty twenty six that is out. I will share, it's for well, actually, city employees too, but for council to fill out and they they take it seriously and they don't have a lot of responses, so I would love if any of you would like to fill it out. I think that, um, I, I think there's a lot of dispirited feeling about the um, revenue options for cities from other cities throughout the state. And so I think it's important for them to hear that that still matters, assuming it still matters to us. Um, and other issues that that you guys individually as council members care about, so. I will share that. And then AWC's often, often reaches out and asks for your input and I'm just encourage you to feel free to get involved. There's good, important ways to make your voice heard there too, so.
Great, thank you. And then just to mention too, that if uh, you need a letter of support for the federal application for the fire training facility, I'd be hap- with all my spare time, I'd be happy to put one together. Thank you.
That one is tricky because they give us page limits, so we actually don't send in that many letters of support, so. Thanks.
Any other questions or comments? But Councilmembers, I think.
Well, just one short one. I think uh, Jennifer explained the situation with the trestle fairly well. There's another effort was part of a committee last year, I think it was, maybe it was early this year, to look at trestle improvements, actually Highway Two from kinda Snohomish out. So that's a separate issue. I think this, these improvements will make a material improvement, but the the much bigger, much more expensive, longer term issue is not real term, so we'll deal with it the best we can, but I don't think we can expect major changes to that trestle anytime soon.
Yeah, and then for my comments, um, the condominium liability bill has been on the AWC's um, shortlist for quite a while now. I I don't know exactly what the changes are, but are we still limited to like two stories and sixteen units? You know, Trevor, at the.
I I would have to double check.
If you wouldn't mind giving us the status of what are the requirements are, maybe the planning department or both can let us know. Um, also, I believe it's a twenty six is AWC Legislative uh, Committee Meeting. I usually attend those. It's coming up.
Yes, that's their, their um, convention, conference, whatever is around that timeframe, and I think that's the day of that.
Let's, so if you guys have any feedback, let me know, email me or let me know and I'll, cause I'm, I'm planning on attending that, at least remotely, so. So any other questions, comments? Okay, alright, thank you very much.
Thank you, everybody. Appreciate it.
Jennifer, is there any other comments that you wanted to make about the legislative report or is that it? Jennifer, is there any other comments that you want to make about the legislative report? Or is that it?
No, I I think great comments about the condo reform and we'll work on that after these folks get done with the biggest lift of the recent portion of their career, probably. Um, so we'll let them get through the comp plan. And then I would, I think it'd be great to have at least a report or more information back to you guys about the status of the condo issues. I don't have anything else on the last.
And I guess those for for just for those who might be me, um, watching. Um, the idea is that I I'll just speak for myself. Ownership is really important for um, and that uh, we think there's a lot of uh folks out there would like to buy versus just rent. And they have the capabilities to do that, both younger and retirees. So uh, that's this council. I personally have been been this one of my longstanding um promotion is condominium buildings. So we can have real ownership. Councilor Ryan.
Thank you. If it's appropriate, I'd be happy to host a discussion about condominium uh regulations as they currently stand and any requests for improvements and one of the parks and quality of life or Parks and Built Environment uh Committee.
Oh, that sounds like a good idea. I'd like to refresh what the current rules are and see how we can improve those. So thank you. All right. So moving on to the comprehensive plan. Um, so we have two readings. Um, do we want to do a briefing first, or should I read the?
If you could, they're they're interrelated. If you wouldn't mind, I think it'd be great to read them both into the record and then York and Allison will delve into what each of them are in a brief presentation.
Okay, so we'll go to um item number seventeen. Council Bill two five zero five dash thirty six, first reading adopt a ordinance adopting the Everett twenty forty four comprehensive plan. The public hearing is June eleventh, and the third and final reading is June eighteenth twenty five. Item number eighteen, Council Bill two five zero five dash thirty seven. First reading and ordinance adopting the Everett twenty forty four periodic update development regulations and amending chapter three, eight, thirteen, fourteen, sixteen, nineteen and twenty. Third and final reading is June eighteenth twenty five. Okay, thank you.
Thank you, Council President Schwab. Good evening, members of the council. I'm York Stevens, watch the planning director. With me is Allison Wetzel, Long Range Planning Manager. The Planning Commission uh last night completed their review and their work on the comprehensive plan and the development regulations periodic update and adopted a resolution. I will make you wait till the end of the presentation to hear what that uh recommendation was to the council, but they did make one last night. So we're here at first reading and we have proposed ordinances. Uh, this evening I'll touch on a quick orientation to the latest documents that are available. Um, and touch on some updates to the materials since the complete review draft was transmitted to the council on April seven with a book two uh on May tenth. And then we'll talk a little bit about next steps. Uh, as always, all of the materials are available at everettwa.gov slash twenty forty four. You'll see a long list of new materials that are on that front page. And there's also still for folks getting oriented to the project, a lot of other material on that website. Don't forget to check the document library where a couple of uh uh key documents and new ones are there. There are two ordinances. The first one would adopt an updated comprehensive plan. Uh, the ordinance uh has recitals that describe the process and have some findings. And then there's an exhibit, which is the comprehensive plan. The comprehensive plan itself has a housing appendix with some data and analysis and a transportation appendix with the same kind of data and analysis. We have uh also amendments to development regulations about twenty or so chapters of municipal code, most of which are in Title nineteen, which is where most of the development regulations that govern uh what you can build and where the land use regulations for the city are. Uh, again, proposed ordinance, a lot of the recitals are similar to the comprehensive plan unless there was a need for them to be different. Uh, the development regulations include the zoning map that is formerly part of chapter nineteen oh five. We've included it as a separate document just for easier uh viewing. And there is a development regulations change report to show what uh summarize what the changes were from that April seven, May ten, complete review draft to the May thirty final draft is the terms that we're using. In the development regulations and the comprehensive plan document, all of the substantive changes are also highlighted yellow. So you uh, if you had been familiar with where we were at in uh April, uh, you won't have to go hunting for changes. If it was Scrivener's type things like punctuation, it would not be highlighted yellow. There's also a couple of supporting documents. The final environmental impact statement has been issued. We are still working through some technical difficulties. We have a comment database with responses in it that is part of the an appendix to the final environmental impact statement and an important document for your review. Um, we would expect that uh either today or tomorrow. We also have a memo detailing what um was or was not and mostly was included of a batch of specific amendment requests that were submitted during an application period in twenty twenty three. Um, the council by resolution advanced uh a number of them into the periodic update process for review, analysis and potential inclusion in the final product. We have, uh, I think all of them were either included or at least partially included. And the memo uh details exactly how those um how those were incorporated. Uh, state parking requirements, part of the book two in on May tenth were uh major update to the parking chapter nineteen dot thirty four. A lot of that, most of that, maybe even all of that was based on changes uh to state law in some bills this year and in prior years. The state parking requirements table, it is a dizzying uh batch of timelines, applicability and geography and different uh regulations. Most of it puts a cap on what the city can require for off-street parking. So I would encourage folks to check out that state parking requirements table uh to understand a little bit of why those changes uh were made to the parking chapter. Also have the list of public meetings that have occurred through the uh the duration of this project, which we talked about at the last meeting. And the public comment database, when it was working right, um, an output from a couple of uh a couple of days ago. And that's what will be updated and will have responses included. Um, I think all of these documents are in the document library tab if you're on everettwa.gov slash twenty forty four. Um, I'll cover.
I have a question about um what documents. Um, so if if there were some changes that were made in some specific areas, is there an updated map now? Location is in here?
Yes, the updated zoning map and there are three formats for it are on that front page of everettwa.gov slash twenty forty four. Uh, there's a PDF, an image, and then a swipe map. The swipe map is probably the most user friendly. You can zoom in all the way to a specific property and see how it's changed from existing to the May thirtieth is the date.
Is the swipe map updated?
Yes, to the May thirty version, which is our current, which is in your council packet.
Okay. Thank you.
Um, I'll summarize some of the changes to the regulations package from the complete review draft to this final draft. Um, council members, our lingo is going to talk about neighborhood commercial, small group of council members continues to work on some updates to that. I don't think we have any changes in the May thirtieth version compared to the April seventh version. Um, we're waiting for those discussions to continue to play out and maybe we'll have some discussion about that today. Accessory dwelling units. Um, we worked to revise the proposal to the term I use is do no harm to accessory dwelling unit development. That's something that we heard pretty strongly in uh comments uh on the April seven draft. Um, wanted to make sure that if you can build an accessory dwelling unit now in a certain place and a certain size with a certain fee structure and exemptions from things like frontage improvements, which is where you have to build sidewalks if there are none or improve the sidewalks if they are substandard. We went through all of the different um aspects of regulations for accessory dwelling units. And I think uh have arrived as far as we know, and have not heard otherwise arrived at that standard of do no harm. So if you could do accessory dwelling units now, you can do them in the future in the same way under this proposed code. Um, so you'll see a number of edits around that. We reduced the rear building setbacks. This was actually uh came out of those discussions around accessory dwelling units. You can currently build an accessory dwelling unit uh up to the five feet from a rear property line. Normally, and in the single family zones, at least the rear setback is twenty feet. Uh, so part of accommodating the accessory dwelling units and it and it seemed to make sense for site flexibility and design. The rear setbacks for all buildings was reduced from the proposed ten to a proposed five. Uh, the neighborhood residential constrained zone, that change about accessory dwelling units is just again a a clarification of what uh what can be allowed, which is to accessory dwelling units like you can build now in those areas. We did, um, I think I talked about this last time we were at the council, uh, did a big update to neighborhood residential site plan requirements in nineteen oh eight oh three oh. We had a requirement that dwellings face either a public street or a shared yard. And we were considering facing um addressed alleys as well. Got a lot of pushback on that from the constraints it would place on site design and some common development types. Uh, so we revised uh and talked a lot with the planning commission on that. We revised those standards so that only dwellings within thirty feet of a public street must face the street. So in almost all development contexts, that should leave um what we call the warm embrace of the public street. Um, but if you're deeper in a lot, we have a lot of very deep lots in Everett. Um, there would be more flexibility and it could uh face onto a driveway or or something like that. Uh, similarly, removed the requirement for at least one dwelling on a lot to face the street, although to not face the street, you would have to set that dwelling back over thirty feet. So not very often would that, would we expect that to happen? Uh, private yards and shared yards remain in the chapter, although the requirement that uh new dwelling units face onto the shared yards has been removed. Uh, private yards would be required for dwellings and it would have to be a dimension, minimum dimension of eight feet and a total of eighty square feet. Uh, if you do not have a private yard, then you must be part of a shared yard. And shared yards are, I think it's three hundred square feet for up to five dwelling units using it or ten percent of the lot area for more than five. So maintain a requirement for yards, maintain a requirement for dwellings on the street to face the street and then um provided some more flexibility for site design other than that. Along the same lines, uh, there is a red uh minimum ground floor habitable space depth regulation in chapter nineteen oh eight. And this is all for the neighborhood residential zone as well as townhouses and detached uh homes in all zones, these standards. Uh, there had been a a minimum habitable space of twenty feet and heard from um the development community that some common townhouse floor plans usually have something like a garage stairs up and then that fourth corner is a a room of some sort. That room commonly twelve feet or easy to do twelve feet, twenty feet would start to put a uh um some tough restrictions on on uh building design. So loosened that one up. I should mention that all of these regulations are modifiable administratively. So if a uh there is a situation, a specific situation that we hadn't thought of uh that would result in a equivalent or superior development and would maintain consistency with the uh the rationale for the reason, uh, then we could provide flexibility to those regulations as well. Exempted rooftop decks or flat roofs from roof design requirements. I think that was just a cleanup. And then uh we have some garage regulations in the neighborhood residential zone and for townhouses and detached dwellings. Um, I think we've always applied those only to public streets, not private streets, but the definition of street in our code includes public and private thoroughfares, I think are the words. So we wanted to uh catch up the regulations with how we're applying it. And these garage setbacks and length um uh regulations would only apply to facing public streets. In nineteen oh nine, so this is uh for bigger buildings in bigger zones. Uh, the zones that are not neighborhood residential or neighborhood residential constrained, unless you're building a townhouse or a detached dwelling in those zones. We have the inclusionary zoning requirement in certain areas of South Everett around Casino Road and down to about a hundredth. And then again, a small area around Airport Road and Evergreen Way. Um, again, responding to some uh some comments and concerns, especially about the significant um break point at eight units that we had in the original proposal where up to eight units was exempt. But then when you got your eighth unit, then you have uh would all of a sudden require the full twenty percent of all eight units. Could be a strong disincentive to build an eighth unit if you were right at that threshold. And we try to avoid those types of artificial disincentives. So in the charts here, you see the uh chart on the left is the number of units that would be required. Uh, vertical scale, then the horizontal scale is how many uh units are developed. Gray is the old standard, black is the new standard. Reduces it for uh the inclusionary zoning requirement for uh projects of eight to fifteen units. Increases it for projects of seven units, and then everything else would be the same. On the right is there's a fee and lieu option of fifteen dollars per square foot of the development. Uh, it's slightly different method of calculation because you don't have to round to a whole unit. Um, but the same concept where a little bit of an increase for seven and eight unit developments, a little bit of a decrease for uh nine to fifteen and then back to the same. We chose sixteen, uh, and that made sense in this case for a full, um. Sorry, up to up to eight is exempt. Sorry, up to six is exempt under the new proposal. Uh, seven to fifteen is half off of the inclusionary zoning requirement. Sixteen is where you become eligible for multifamily tax exemption. So that's why that number was chosen. And then uh finally, we added an option to defer payment of the fee in lieu, if so chosen by the development until six months after certificate of occupancy, which helps with the financing and the biggest crunch of financing for a development project is right around that construction timeline. Uh, nineteen oh nine, we also had already pulled back significantly on upper floor step backs for multi-story buildings. Uh, current code requires that at about the fourth floor, you pull in buildings by about ten feet. And then again, at some higher floor levels. We had pulled back on that significantly down to just eight feet deep along half of the front or side street facades on either floor two, three or four, uh, but still got some comments about uh the uh architects have a really tough time with those step backs. And if you go around the region, you will see that almost all new buildings go straight up from the ground. So um, kind of agreed with the architectural community there that that was a tough uh standard to meet water intrusion and and a bunch of other trying to get plumbing all in a stack and that sort of thing. So we removed that last uh limitation on upper floor plate from the proposal. And made a small reduction to the required uh transparency on certain designated streets that currently applies from two to ten feet of vertically and instead would be from two to eight feet vertically. Almost there, we added a density bonus. You remember the Casino Road community had had this in their uh requests to the city. Added a density bonus for affordable housing on property owned or controlled by a religious organization. Uh, ten feet of extra building height there. And then working with the Port of Everett, we have kind of a uh a new way of calculating height for the industrial waterfront height area because we dropped the building height map and are instead going with one height limit per zone. We lost the differences, which were the heavy industrial zone, which is most of the surrounding the peninsula of North Everett. Uh, varied from four or five stories up to nine, ten stories, even though it was all the same zone. So the high and heavy industrial zone is now one hundred feet as a general standard. For the most part, industrial buildings don't go up very high. Um, the Port of Everett was one who had some concerns about the way that this was measured, which is shown in the diagram up there. And uh wanted um to make sure that they did not lose any height allowance that is currently there on the Norton Terminal, which is the part of the port property that is uh uh in the waterfront height area. So we uh added back a two-floor bonus height for water dependent uses after a view shed analysis and a review by the hearing examiner, which is part of existing code. We're still working with the port because that may not have got us all the way there. We may have still dropped the height by about fifteen feet if you calculate the slope and everything on the Norton Terminal. So we're taking a closer look at that and may have a revised proposal for you in the next uh for the next meeting. Parking, uh, there were in three different sections of prohibition on ground level surface parking between streets and buildings. One for residential multifamily buildings, one for non-residential buildings and one special for Evergreen Way and Broadway. Uh, we consolidated all of those into one and then added a graphic because it can be confusing sometimes how it had uh currently written. Uh, you can see the graphic there, I think, tells Uh, you can see the graphic there, I think tells the story. Okay, those were the major changes, um, uh, some changes to the comprehensive plan as well. Those are all highlighted yellow, but I don't think any of those, um, really need, we need to dwell on this evening. Planning Commission did recommend approval of the, uh, package, the May thirtieth package is the same one that's in your packets today. With one, um, supplemental recommendation, which was that the inclusionary zoning regulations included in, uh, nineteen oh nine oh seven oh should be removed and the city should work proactively on a subarea planning effort for that area. Next steps, um, we have gotten through, uh, the first half. This is the slide from last week or first reading and briefing today. We have a public hearing scheduled a week from today in this room. And then a week after that, uh, we'll ask for, uh, council action. Everettwa.gov slash twenty forty-four, um, happy to talk about whichever topics, questions you would like.
I just wanted to point out one more time before we move to questions that, um, this is a really impressive amount of work. Uh, you may have seen other cities pass their comprehensive plans towards the end of twenty twenty-four. But we, um, continued work on our comprehensive plan in order to marry it up with the development regulations. So that the whole package goes into effect, um, once you take your action in a couple of weeks. Uh, and, uh, so some of the things that you heard about tonight, other cities are grappling with and will continue to grapple with, um, particularly related to the development regulations part of it. So they did a great job. So, any more questions?
Thank you. Um, Councilmember is Arlingo.
There, um, with respect to, uh, some of the recommendations, uh, in Neighborhood Commercial, uh, our subcommittee has meet, maybe we, we're gonna need to meet again to form some specific recommendations. But I wanted to clarify, um, uh, my thinking on this in terms of what we're doing in Neighborhood Commercial. And hopefully that can be a step toward us arriving at, um, some potential changes. I'm not sure we'll all agree in the end unanimously. Uh, we have some different perspectives on this and some of these arise from different aspect, or different parts of the city. But I hope we can, uh, get this done as part of this comprehensive plan update. So, um, I guess I just a few quick notes here, uh, maybe not quite as quick as I'd hope. I do want to recognize the work that's been done by the Planning Department, the Planning Commission and council members. Uh, this is a huge lift. Uh, I think the Planning Commission and the Planning Department have, have, have shouldered the biggest burden by far. I also am grateful for input for our, from our community members, um, especially the kinds of things they'd like to see in their neighborhood with respect to Neighborhood Commercial. Uh, our long-range planning manager and department staff have given substance to the Neighborhood Commercial that's, uh, intended to replace our existing neighborhood business uses. So part of the reason to, um, to get this done now, uh, get a version of this done now is not to leave a gap in those kinds of uses and make things more clumsy for a department that's got to be a little bit shell shocked after all this work. Um, Alice Anne's articulated, uh, what she's heard broadly in the current environment, uh, where traffic, uh, in our neighborhoods is heavier. Streets are more crowded, uh, and from that people would like better access, especially walking or wheeling to local businesses. The density that we're planning for generally in this plan is, uh, uh, e- especially the increased density in neighborhood zones will make these, uh, neighborhood businesses more, more helpful, more beneficial. Um, the, as I mentioned, the bin to go, this situation is complicated by the differences in different parts of the city. Uh, Everett's nearly a dozen miles north to south, south and nearly six miles east to west with vastly different histories uh, and different topography. Uh, planning has a laudable goal of a unified approach to Everett. I think they call it one Everett for regulations. And, uh, for the near term, uh, desirable things certainly, but for the near term, I think we're likely to be working toward that goal. Recognizing that different residential parts of the city have different commercial needs or gaps and differing street layouts. Um, so for example, some areas of Everett have a very well-defined street grid and some not really at all. Uh, some have adequate access to stores and services and some really do not. And so that's where Neighborhood Commercial can, can step in. Um, so this is what the, some of the discussion around this has led to a meeting of our ad hoc, uh, subcommittee on Neighborhood Commercial. Uh, and, uh, a proposal that I'm working on here that we recognize different preferences of our different council members, uh, districts. So in terms of where we locate some of these things, that will be, I anticipate, a little bit different in different parts of the city. And of course, uh, planning has sought feedback from council members on that. And I intend to give great weight to what, what district did council members want in their districts. I think they understand those, uh, the best. So that's an effort to deal with the where element of where we do these neighborhood commercial uses. The other fundamental element is what, which uses we would allow and what limits and or mitigations of impact. Um, and I'm mindful particularly about, uh, from our proposed neighborhood commercial framework. A core stated goal for the framework is to regulate such neighborhood commercial uses with development standards to ensure compatibility with neighbors. Um, I'm kind of struck by the consistency of what we as council members have heard, especially in terms of written comment. Uh, in terms of the desire from our community members, uh, and that being specifically small food and convenience stores or bodegas, they're sometimes called, other small-scale services like bakeries, delis and coffee shops. Um, I'd like to contrast that with potential concerns. I've heard about the things that are most desired from our neighbors, from our community members, but have not heard from those who are excited about, uh, living next to one of these, uh, corner commercial uses right next door. As corner uses, they would have between two and three immediate neighbors. Now, uh, I'm, that's understandable. I, I don't expect them to be thinking that way necessarily. I see our duties as, uh, council members to look deeply into both the benefits and the drawbacks, uh, the trade-offs of these new uses. And to keep an eye out, especially for unintended consequences. Uh, in this neighborhood commercial effort, we're drawing more commercial or non-residential uses into the neighborhood zones. That's not a simple thing. That's not a zero impact thing. Uh, I prefer to do that with extra care since a commercial use, uh, cannot be readily undone if it true proves unduly troublesome to the neighbors or to the neighborhood. Uh, therefore, my general trajectory on this is to focus first on the most desired uses, the ones we've been hearing about. The ones that have the most benefit for the neighborhood. And I think in general, those that I've talked about here also have the lowest and most predictable impacts, uh, negative impacts on the neighborhoods and on the immediate neighbors. Uh, so, uh, and as I said, every neighborhood commercial business will have two or three of these residential neighbors. Um, I, I note from planning some advice that previous efforts for some commercial uses have stalled. And I'd like to get past that this time. I think I would like to, to, uh, assist our neighborhoods in dealing with the density that we're talking about here. Cause that density is something we're compelled to do. One of the other aspects of this is, uh, parking, uh, from state law, we're entering a regulatory regime where we can't require incremental parking. Uh, I mean, and hopefully not too much of that is necessary because a great deal of the business for these neighborhood businesses should come from those neighborhoods. People walking, biking, wheeling and not bringing in too much traffic. Um, but our remedies or mitigation of potential parking program, uh, problems are limited. Um, of course, one approach is simply to not allow uses that would pose unacceptable conflict in terms of the parking. Um, but an alternative that still allows commercial use is to make it, uh, simpler and more straightforward to implement residential parking permits where needed. So that's one of the things I think we can do, uh, that helps us respond to these things in the future without having to be too restrictive these days, uh, in the initial stages. Um, and then another approach is to limit the size or scope of the commercial use to limit the parking impact. Um, it seems reasonable to expect we'll, we'll propose several of these approaches together. Uh, and then lastly, I'm also mindful of, uh, code and parking enforcement. Uh, I like to assume that all the businesses, uh, that come into the neighborhoods will be good neighbors and follow all the regulations. Um, but code and parking enforcement can be helpful when those assumptions are wrong. The thing is they don't operate in the early and late hours of the day. Uh, these are, we're proposing six AM to eleven PM. So part of that is outside the hours of, uh, parking and code enforcement. And so I want to make sure I don't, uh, suggest that we bring in, again, more of the commercial into the residential than we really intend to. Um, then there were a couple of specific things that are on my mind. I'll give these as last examples. We're talking about developments up to three thousand square feet, uh, with small hotel rooms at around two hundred and fifty square feet or so. I am concerned about the potential in new construction for, uh, a ten-room B and B next door to an individual residential house. So, uh, the, and, and one of the things that has been suggested is, um, perhaps limiting to something like five rooms for new construction, but then allowing, uh, existing uses to be grandfathered in that way. Presumably they've worked out their, uh, their, uh, their conflicts and impacts. Um, daycare, um, the current limit I think is twelve children or adults per dw- per dwelling. And, um, I, I'm not sure at three thousand square feet for a new, uh, for a new daycare, what that would be in terms of, uh, likely larger population. So I'm concerned about the population there. Um, entertainment and recreation, um, music, that is recorded music, health and fitness clubs, things like that. Um, one of the challenges there is the kind of noise you might have from recorded music, even an inside use. If you're an immediate neighbor is different than the intermittent music you might hear from a regular residential neighbor. So something like a, um, a health club operating multiple hours a day, early in the morning, late in the afternoon and the evening when people are coming, going to work. Uh, there could be a lot of that music even below some of our typical noise levels, but the change is that it may be hours at a time. So those are the kind of unintended consequences that I'm trying to be especially, uh, mindful of. And then lastly, some of the clinic uses, I can see how clinic availability might be beneficial in some of the residential neighborhoods. But there are a lot of different clinic types, uh, some of them drawing locally, but some of them drawing much wider. Uh, different, uh, clients, different kinds of services. I'd like to understand some of that better before we, um, approve this in a broader permissive fashion. So that kind of now, what I'm concluding to is to try to, um, come up with a limited set of the initial, um, uses for the neighborhood commercial zone being less permissive and more specific. And doing that as a way to get this commercial zone, these commercial neighborhood, commercial zones working and well accepted by our, um, by our residents. And then we can expand that gradually over time, both as we, um, get used to these kinds of zones this way. And as we learn more about which ones are, um, are a challenge or troublesome and, and how much. So sorry to go on so long, but that's kind of this whole proposal. Uh, what I anticipate is here, uh, before the next meeting, we'll have then specific recommendations.
Okay, thank you for that detailed report. Um, any comments or? Councilmember Ring.
Thank you. I have a question about the Planning Commission resolution. I'm surprised to see that this had passed. Was there, um, was there a separate vote to have the inclusionary zoning removed? Was that like part of an amendment?
Yeah, so it was, uh, the, the proposed resolution to them was a simple, uh, approved the, uh, recommend approval of the overall package. There was a, at first, a amendment proposed and approved to sunset, three years sunset. Uh, to put a three-year sunset on it. Um, there was some discussion around a concern of a, um, backfiring, there's another word for that, but, uh, unintended, um,
Consequences.
Negative impact, uh, to affordability was the kind of the tenor of the discussion. So it was not at all a, uh, a lack of, of care for South Everett, but that this proposal would have, um, unintended suppression of housing development and impacts on affordability. So at first they, um, went, went with a suggestion that there'd be a three-year sunset on it. And then the discussion turned to, uh, how about not at all? And I believe it was unanimous of the, of the commissioners who were there, which was all but one.
Who is, uh, absent?
Uh, Chair Chatters.
Thank you. Thanks.
Any other comments or questions?
So just to be certain here, um, after all of the people from Casino Road came and told us their stories and told the, uh, Planning Commission their stories. And, um, we've had months of discussion about this particular piece. The Planning Commission decided that, uh, let's see, projects, it's what you were talking about earlier, right? Inclusionary zoning requirements under this section are waived for projects resulting in fewer than six dwelling units. And inclusionary zoning requirements under this section, including the alternative compliance fee in lieu shall be reduced by half. What problem do they have? They don't, what, what are the unintended possible fear consequences that they're worried about? You remember?
That are, that are, uh, increase in the cost or, um, requirements for residential development would reduce residential development, which that reduction would lead to, uh, some of the negative consequences like displacement. I think there's a variety of economic studies out there that have, uh, some do find a suppression of housing development depends a lot on the housing market. And I don't think there's any clean, um, forecast for what this would do in Everett and in South Everett, but that was the main.
It's definitely against what we've been getting advocacy from, from the neighborhood.
Correct.
Okay, and, um, so this recommendation, if we just stop talking about it right now, then, and we vote on the comprehensive plan, it isn't incorporated or is this an amendment that is before us?
Uh, it is not structured as an amendment, um, so it would take some action to remove it. The recommendation from the Planning Commission would be to take such action.
So if you did nothing, the inclusionary zoning piece remains. You'd have to make an amendment to reflect what the Planning Commission suggested. Thank you. I wanted that information.
Yep, just to clarify that, um, so currently it's still in the language.
Correct.
And then I had a, a comment also about that. Don't we, if it's a large enough structure, isn't it required to do some impact, um, environmental impact statement? And is some of the study already included?
For very large developments, we have categorical exemptions that get pretty high. I'm not going to try to remember the exact number.
So if it's a big enough project, they're gonna do this anyway.
If it's a big enough, um, it's unlikely that we would require affordability out of a project under State Environmental Policy Act. So it would have, uh, sometimes a review under that, but, um, I can't, we have incentives, so multifamily tax exemption will give twelve years no property tax in return for, uh, keeping twenty percent of the dwelling units affordable to eighty and sixty percent of area median income. Um, the inclusionary zoning does, you can do both. So you can have the, uh, twelve years no property tax. It is a fifty-year affordability period for the inclusionary zoning. It's only a twelve-year affordability period with the option for extensions for the multifamily tax exemption. So currently we only have incentives for affordability and this would be, um, a new requirement in that area.
And so to, to go along with that, um, how much administrative authority does the planning director or the building official have to make adjustments to it?
I don't think there is any in the, in the, in the proposed code as written.
So the flexibility is what I'm asking for.
Right, I, I don't, I think it's just required.
Okay.
That's right.
Councilmember is Arlingo.
Well, I think I'm a little behind almost everybody else here in understanding this, so let me try to do the, the, my simple version of it. That the increasing the affordability of some of the units in one, in these developments, uh, to get an adequate return will require increasing or do require higher prices for all of the other units.
Uh, typically, yeah, typically if there's a cost and, uh, it has to go somewhere. Sometimes that could be seen in higher rent. Sometimes, uh, developer would decide not to make the development or to reduce its size or something like that. Sometimes the development could go on just as it was originally planned and just be affordable. Uh, plenty of developments include the affordability anyways, or that would be part of their mission. Those would not be affected. So there's a variety of.
So the kind of classic unintended consequence that, um, the net effect of it, though it reduce, though it improves some affordability somewhere is, is, the broader effect is negative either in terms of not having a project or increasing some prices, rents.
Some studies have shown that, yeah.
And that, and that's then what the Planning Commission is now more cognizant of. And I suppose in that sense, they're, they're thinking that the feedback or the suggestions we got from the Casino Road community are probably well-intentioned, but likely, uh, either incorrect or not, not well-supported.
That's what some of them said, Dan.
Okay.
There's differing opinions about it.
Yeah.
Like likely to do, it's a risk with that, that tool.
Cause I think we're all pushing hard for affordability. It is a really thorny thing. Okay, thank you.
Anyone, any other comments on? Yeah, I was just, and I, I apologize, that was brought to my attention. It's been a long meeting, so, um, yeah, so we could have a public comment. Thank you, yes. Thank you. Sorry to make you wait there. All right.
Hi, my name is Jean Sette Hewitt and I'm a resident of the Norton Grand Overlay and Vice Chair of the Historical Commission. But I'm here tonight speaking as representing some of the neighbors in my overlay. Um, first of all, I want to thank Alice Anne and Yorick and everyone in the Planning Department. They've done an amazing job. I can't imagine being. I can't imagine being, having to go through this process all over again. They've been very, we've been able to call them with questions. They've always responded quickly. And again, I just, yay, thank you so much. Last year, there was a joint meeting between the Historical and Planning Commissions about the comprehensive plan. And one topic was about creating transition zones between historic overlays and higher density and higher heights of development. And these zones would kind of have a lowered height to preserve the limited historic resources and mitigate the impact of the new development. And work has been done by planning and historical commission and a lot of the issues have been addressed. But upon reviewing the final plan released on Friday, there are still a few critical areas along the west side of Ruckert Avenue from 32nd, 37th, across the alley from the Norton Grand Overlay and around the Donovan District that these two areas still need to be looked at to create a transition zone. The proposed rezoning along the west side of Rucker and Broadway will increase the heights. And additionally, the the way that they measure heights, instead of measuring from the sidewalk, it's going to be an average of, I think, all four points. Some of the some of the homes that are one and two stories are going to have a seven story building behind them. And it's not just the height of the the development. It's also that, you know, they overshadow the historic homes, but all the access to parking services, everything has to happen in the alleys behind these homes. So to have a seven story building and all or 15 in the Donovan Donovan area, all of that traffic is going to be going behind these historic homes. So last night I spoke at the planning commission meeting and Commissioner Finch asked if the planning department would take a look at these areas. If not necessarily, well, I guess we're asking you to look at these areas as well. And if a change can't be made before the adoption of the comprehensive plan, would you request that the planning department consider doing these transition zones along Rucker and Grand, you know, keeping the current RU, I think it's RU four zoning or turn it to RU four zoning with its corresponding heights would probably be the easiest. But I'm sure there are some more creative ways that we can do it to accommodate more height around them, around the historic zone, but be sensitive to the fact that you have one story building on the other side. So I'm hoping that you guys will ask the planning department to take a look at that again and perhaps lower the heights, especially along Rucker between 32nd and 37th and around the Donovan District. Thank you.
Okay. Thank you very much for that. Do we have anyone else? Yeah. Thank you for your patience. Councilmember Ryan.
Thank you. Thank you for the comment as the council liaison for the Historic Commission and as the representative for District Two, which includes the Norton Grand Overlay. I'd be happy to sponsor an amendment to take into consideration the comments this evening. Thank you.
Okay. Does that mean you're making amendment or? So for maybe for next meeting, is that what you're thinking? Okay. And then?
Yeah, we could work with Councilmember Ryan on a specific proposal to bring to the next meeting.
Okay. Thank you. Any other? Councilmember Vogel.
Thank you. With that sponsorship, I might not have been listening to the whole thing. So can you just restate what you said you wanted to do, please?
Sure. Yeah, I think, you know, as the liaison for the Historic Commission, I've been in many meetings with the expertise from our planning staff and also from the representatives on the Historic Commission. And they've talked a lot about historic overlays and making sure that the COP plan fits in seamlessly with, you know, honoring the historic overlay zones. So I think the tiered leveling between the two zones is, you know, it's a citywide approach to to make sure that we don't have tall structures next to not tall structures. So I think it's reasonable. I think it's a reasonable request and I'd be happy to sponsor it as an amendment.
Okay, thanks. So bringing it from, let's say, 15 to four as a layer cake in the Donovan and off Broadway Historical, I know where that is. Rucker, yeah. Okay. I just wanted to make sure. Cool. Great. Look forward to it.
And thank you. Appreciate that. Councilmember Tui.
Yeah, well, after reviewing some of the information from the folks that live on Madrona Avenue, I would like to make a motion that Madrona Avenue or, yeah, Madrona Avenue, which is unique because of the limited right of way, steep slopes, critical areas, constrained access, adjacent railroad tracks, hillside springs and open space trees on either side of the neighborhood and make a motion that we include in the area from Muckletill Boulevard North, including both sides of Madrona Avenue between Howarth Park to Glenwood Creek Stream Corridor be zoned as neighborhood residential constrained.
Seconded.
Motion second. Any discussion? Okay. Clerk, please take the roll.
Vice President Zarlingo.
Yes.
Councilmember Bader.
Yes.
Councilmember Ryan.
Yes.
Councilmember Vogel.
Abstain.
Councilmember Tui.
Yes.
President Chua.
Yes. Want a clarification? Can the chair make a motion? Okay, I'd like to make a motion that the as part of the proposed draft of the comprehensive plan that we include the four lots around Phil Johnson Field that we rezone them as parks and open space.
Second that motion.
Any comments? Councilmember Vogel.
Can you remind us what it is zoned as right now?
Those are known as the transfer lots that were part of the disposition of the Cadman Mine 10 years ago, something around that. They have been zoned like industrial two, I believe. It's the same, we have not proposed any change to any of those industrial zones from what they are. They were deeded to the city as for recreational purposes. The city has been working since that time to figure out how to develop them and everything. Sorry, your question was just what the zoning is LI.
It's nice, though, to get this background.
Yes.
Which then puts into my head. Would that make it, if we rezone it to parks and
Parks, open space.
Open space, does that make it easier or even possible where it hasn't been to get grants and such for open space projects? Do you know? That might not be a question for you. But might this make it easier to get something done with the space so that it can be utilized as park for the people? I just remember hearing something from parks in that van while we were driving by and
I don't know. I think it's been staff's intent. So one of the actions in the urban form element is to prepare a subarea plan for the Southwest Everett Manufacturing Industrial Center, which is a regional center designation through the Puget Sound Regional Council. This transfer lots are inside of that manufacturing industrial center. We are a little bit overdue on preparing a subarea plan. And as part of that effort, we were intending to remove it from the industrial center and that that would be the right time to do a rezone and take the next step in planning. As to whether it would better position us for grants, I would say it surely couldn't hurt. I don't know if it would help.
And then one more thing, I know earlier tonight you mentioned, or somebody here mentioned that it would not preclude the shelter that is going to be created, the emergency shelter for the going on two years. I don't think it's going to last that long, but would it preclude anything like that from being there in the future?
In the future, yes. I believe the shelter would be illegal nonconforming use for that tendency.
Correct. And the the settlement agreement that allows the shelter, current shelter to be there for two years precludes use in the future for a similar project.
The park open space zone has a special set of allowed uses and development standards that are in 1905 to 10. They are not proposed for change at all as part of this project. Basically allows public park development, including passive and active outdoor recreational activities, trails, open space, cultural activities, concessionaires, general park operations and uses customarily incidental there too. That's about it.
Okay, thank you.
Councilmember is Arlingo.
With respect to this area, if I remember correctly, maybe 15 years ago, there was kind of a large land movement on the upland part of that there that closed Severs Ducey for months at least. I guess is that another challenge for this? Maybe it's an appropriate thing for parks and open space, not trying to develop that.
Yeah, I I don't know about that. I I have heard that the land is squishy and not very well suitable for structures and things, especially on the top of the of the hill there.
Okay.
So
I just remember that was closed for a long time, that road, so I wasn't sure. Okay. Thank you.
Any other questions? Okay, clerk, please take the roll.
Vice President Zarlingo.
Yes.
Councilmember Bader.
Yes.
Councilmember Ryan.
Yes.
Councilmember Vogel.
Yes.
Councilmember Tui.
Yes.
President Chua.
Yes. And I would like to acknowledge that planning has more extra work because I know you have to do some work on getting that adjustment industrial complex. So thank you for that. So with no further business, we are now adjourned.